All right, I'll call this meeting to order. I'm Counselor Corey Inglesor for Ward Three Wellington, and I'd like to welcome the public, my fellow council members, media, and anyone who's joining us in person and electronically to this committee, the whole meeting. Today's agenda lists all of the items before committee for consideration. The recommended motions on today's agenda are shown on boldface. It is important to note that any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of November 25th, 2025, at which time the council may approve, amend, defer, or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. This meeting is being livestreamed, and any participation in the meeting's proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording of the meeting will be livestreamed on the county's website and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the top right of the county's homepage at thecounty.ca. Under Agenda Item 5, I will be asking for comments from the audience on any item listed on the agenda. Today, we have one registered comment from the audience. If anyone else present would like to speak at this section of the agenda, you are welcome to do so. You will have three minutes. A reminder that if you participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes and form part of the public record and be posted to the county's website. In the event of a fire, please use the applicable two fire exits in Shire Hall or wherever you're tuning in from. For those in Shire Hall Council Chambers, please mute and limit the use of cell phones. And now, may I please get a motion to confirm today's agenda? Counselor Brand or Horst and Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Chair. This is a Brand, Horst, Roberts motion that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of November 13th, 2025 be confirmed.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that carries. That brings us to disclosure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof. Does anybody have anything to declare? Counselor Grosso?
I will be declaring item number 6.4, the report of the Corporate and Legislative Services Department dated November 13th regarding the supplementary report to Report CLS 13-2025 Taxi Bylaw Update. And the nature of my interests is I own a touring company called Vintage Car Wine Tours in the county.
Thank you. Is there any other peculiar interests to disclose? Seeing none, thank you. I'm gonna veer a little bit on the agenda. Counselor St. Jean has an announcement he'd like to make, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor St. Jean.
Thank you for this indulgence, Mr. Chair. Another busy weekend in Picton this year, this, this weekend, starting with, at the Crystal Palace on Saturday, the Stone Soup Event, featuring several local chefs. And that begins at 4:00 PM or 5:30-ish. And when you're, once you've had your stone soup, you can join the community on Main Street. Picton Main Street will be closed down for the, the fall, what are we calling it now?
Night?
The night market. I'm confusing it with the farmer's market, my apologies. Because that is the next event. And, but, there will be entertainment up and down Main Street. This is the second year of this night market event, put on by the Picton BIA. And sure to be a wonderful event if, as long as the weather holds. And then on Sunday, if you haven't had enough in Picton, then the Picton Town Hall Farmer's Market is hosting its second annual indoor at the Crystal Palace Harvest Market. And that will run from 10 till 2:00 PM, I believe. So very much a busy weekend here in Picton, and please, everyone come out and support the businesses and enjoy the street party that is going to happen on Saturday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor St. Jean. Counselor McNaughton, yeah, quickly, we'll, I'll give you-
May I just ask a question?
Of course.
When is the, do we know when the tree's going out? And when the tree lighting ceremony is happening?
To the best of my knowledge, the tree lighting, if I can check-
Sorry, to stump you, it's just we're on the topic, and it's really fun, too. What's that? Not this week.
Tree lighting, to the best of my know, and my calendar says November the 29th.
Thank you, that's amazing.
So, there will be a large tree going up at the Senate half very shortly. That's all been arranged, and I'm sure operations staff are working diligently to help the Picton BIA with this very large donated tree.
Okay, thank you. And you can let us know November 25th if anything changes, but we'll, we'll go with November 29th. Okay. That will bring us to deputations, which we have none, so we'll move on to comments from the audience. And today, we have Dorothy Bothwell with us. Welcome, Dorothy. Just a reminder that you have three minutes.
Want me to wait for Counselor St. Jean to come back, or?
I think if-
Go ahead.
Go ahead, and he'll, he'll join us when he gets back.
Is this on? You can hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. So, this is with respect to Agenda Item 6.2 EV800 Water Waste Water Allocation Policy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My questions are, who has the authority to take back or adjust servicing allocation? So, in the policy draft, it says under General 6F, "Council may stipulate conditions with any allocated capacity which, if not met, may result in council amending or revoking the allocation at council's sole discretion." But then further in the draft, under Plans of Subdivision and Subdivision Agreements sections of the policy, it states, "The county, in its sole discretion, at the time of considering an extension of the draft plan approval, may revoke any assignment or refuse to assign any servicing allocation and refund the applicable connection charges." And then again, further, it says, "In the opinion of the county, there is no likelihood that some or all of these lots will be serviced in the immediate future. Then the county may, at its sole discretion, remove or adjust the quantity of service allocation to this development by advising the owner and refunding the applicable connection charges." So council doesn't see amendments or extensions to draft plans or subdivision agreements, for instance, the Caitlin Extensions, and this has been subdelegated to the CAO and Director of Development. Council only gets to see and approve the initial draft plan. Where the county is used in this policy, rather than clearly stating council, it would imply that these decisions are subdelegated to the Director and CAO. So, how will council be made aware of or have decision-making authority to amend or revoke servicing allocation if extensions or amendments are subdelegated? Second question is, why are water wastewater DCs not included under the draft plan of subdivision or subdivision agreement sections, only connection charges? When the question was raised of the new Director of Development at the November 6 Water Waste Water Rates Committee meeting, she responded that the county uses connection charges under the Municipal Act and not development charges. The Director of Finance clarified for the Director of Development that the county does, in fact, use water wastewater ASDCs in Wellington, and Wellington's Water Waste Water ASDC bylaw has been in place since 2021. Considering this confusion, was the legal firm provided with the current Wellington area-specific DC bylaw when reviewing this policy? Where the policy provides for servicing allocation to be removed or adjusted, there's no language to adjust or refund applicable ASDCs for Wellington developments, and therefore, no legal ability to enforce use it or lose it. Water allocation committed to Caitlin's front-end agreement payment of ASDCs and current Phase One Registered Plan of Subdivision, or any future Wellington developments, would be impacted by this gap, leaving councils' hands tied. I would respectfully ask council to send this policy back to staff and legal to amend and close these gaps to protect the county's interest and get it right now, especially considering that the interim control bylaw, which expires November 26th, is not being extended. Waiting until future allocation is available to fix this language does not meet the immediate need to address the use of current ASDCs in this policy. And then I just did a little correction to the wording of the provincial policy statement, which should be the provincial planning statement and the initial statement of the policy. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy. Just hang tight, I'll see if there's any questions. Counselor McNaughton?
Thank you. Thank you for these comments. It's very helpful to hear this perspective. I'm just sort of thinking about the authority question that you've brought up, and wondering if, how you've, if you had an idea about how that could be done. So the only thing that sort of jumps to my mind is that it would be reported on quarterly if there were any limits reached that would come forward to council. That's the only thing I've come up with, and I was just wondering if you've got a better idea, because sometimes I think you do.
So, whatever you're gonna decide on needs to be put into this policy, but there's a couple of options. One would be looking at the subdelegation bylaw and suggesting that any amendments or extensions that include a water allocation be brought back to council. So it would be an amendment to the subdelegation bylaw. I don't think there's a conflict there with what the province has dictated about subdelegation, because you do have the right to ask that. The other thing is quarterly, I think you're gonna, you could miss something that way. I think there needs to be just some awareness of these things at the time that the application for an extension is being brought forward to planning, so it needs to be-
Automatically calendarized.
On a planning meeting, and then you need to be made aware that we've received an extension request, which has a water allocation attached to it. And then the question of who has the authority falls under the, you have to change this wording to council then has the authority to, to look at that amendment. Those are just some suggestions.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Dorothy? Seeing none? Thank you, Dorothy. I'll see if there's anybody else that would like to provide a comment. We have a thin audience, so probably not. Can I please get a motion to receive today's comments from the audience? Counselor Prinsen, Counselor Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a Prinsen, Nyman motion. We received the one comment from the audience on today's agenda item.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that carries. So that'll bring us to item 6.1. We have a report of the Recreation and Community Facilities Department dated November 13th, 2025 regarding the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And I believe we have John Hack joining us, so before we put it on the floor, we'll, we'll let him speak, and then, and then we'll go from there. John, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, I don't have a formal presentation. I can run through one if you need.
Oh, we can't, we can't hear you, John. Are you able to speak a little closer to the mic?
My microphone is on. It seems to be working. Can you hear me?
Barely, but if you speak loudly, I think we'll be able to get through.
Yeah, I'm pretty, speaking pretty loudly, I'm afraid. I don't have a formal presentation. I can bring up the one that we had in the summer, if that's helpful, but-
Okay, just one second, I think, I think clerk's gonna, clerk's gonna see if she can fix the volume issue on our end. Okay, so then, we'll, let's put it on the floor first, and then we'll move in, into questions. So can I get a mover and second, or Counselor St. Jean, seconded by Mayor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's the St. Jean Ferguson motion that report RCF 022025 regarding the Parks and Recreation Master Plan be received. The council endorsed the Parks and Recreation Master Plan available as Attachment 1 to this report as a guiding document for future planning and investment in parks, recreation facilities, and services across Prince Edward County. The council directs staff to incorporate the recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan into future capital planning and ensure alignment with the Asset Management Plan and annual operating budget processes. The council directs staff to review the terms of reference for the recreation committees in Q1 of 2026, and to explore opportunities to realign service delivery to reflect the broader community functions these committees support beyond recreation. And the council directs staff to review and update the facility rentals and ICE allocation policy, RCF 01, to clarify equitable access to facilities for all user groups and to maximize utilization.
Thank you, Counselor St. Jean. I see Director Lindsay here. Do you have anything to add before we go into questions?
Yes, certainly, if you don't mind. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, and members of council. I am here today to present the proposed Parks and Rec, Rec Master Plan for Prince Edward County, which will be our guide for our parks, recreational facilities, and services moving into the next decade. We do have Jonathan Hack from Sierra Planning and Management here, who will be helping answer any questions because of the extended time that this process has taken. We thought it would be best to have him on hand to answer questions. But on behalf of the Recreation and Community Facilities Department, it is important to extend heartfelt thanks to members of council, staff, the public committees, who have all taken a significant amount of time to share their ideas, feedback, and attend the various forms of engagement that have been online surveys, six in-person sessions, open houses, a variety of different avenues that have taken place for feedback with this process. This is the county's first comprehensive plan for parks and recreation. It addresses demographic shifts, aging infrastructure, and growing demand for inclusive and accessible recreation. The Parks and Rec Master Plan aligns with the county's strategic plan, asset management plan, and AODA standards. There are three pillars, which I think kind of break the 55 action items down and, and make the service deliverables very easy to measure: community recreation hubs, service delivery excellent, and parks and outdoor facilities. And certainly, I could go on and talk about this plan at length, but it has been a lengthy but very worthwhile process. In the report, you can see that some of the action items have already been taken and completed to date, including the boat launch review, the arts plan, and starting to move forward on some of the primary hub recreation master plans for large sites. So with that, I will open it up for questions, and between Jonathan and myself, hopefully we can, we can answer them all.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll go to the committee for questions. Counselor Hirsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Lisa, and everybody for this master work. It has taken a long time, as you said, but we find you do have a kind of a coherent list of recommendations. I particularly appreciate the fact that you've tied this into the asset management plan. That's very important, because we'll probably even see in the upcoming budget in a few weeks that there are, there are parks and rec items as part of that asset management, so that's important to recognize. I also fully support the idea of having a new look at the mandates of more recreation committees. I can speak for the South Marysburg Committee, which for actually quite a number of years, we have two pots of money. We keep the, the per capita pot that the county gives us, and we have a pot of money that we raise by various fundraising events. And with that pot of money, we do, we do activities which are way outside the mandate, the county mandate for rec committees. So it'd be better, in my view, to expand that mandate overall, to make life kind of maybe easier for, for rec committees, so support that. I have just one question, though, one little concern. In the, in the background study, which is sort of at the outset of the, all the colored part of this report, it continues to talk about the changing demographics and saying that our demographics are getting older. And I mentioned this in one of the previous sessions on this, and, and the data used here ends in 2021. I would argue strongly that that has changed. Our schools are full to overflowing. You look at the, the new homes being built in the Picton subdivisions and elsewhere, and it's younger families moving in. So my question is, is anything in this plan kind of married to that idea that we are getting older? Because I really think we're not.
John, if you want to go ahead on that one?
Yeah, can you hear me? Let's do a sound check.
Not well, but we'll, I think we'll, we'll manage if you can, if you, if you speak up, we'll get through it.
Okay, I'll, I'll bellow and try not to get aggressive as I do it. That's usually the human failing when you, when you shout loudly, so don't take any body actions of mine as, as being aggressive. So, the, the, the plan rests on the census data, and the census data essentially is going to be replaced next summer, so I think first thing is, for other reasons, I'm sure the, the county will be looking at census data carefully in the next couple of years, anyway. I think the counselor is right. I think with the pandemic particularly, that flow of, of capital and people continued. But what I can tell you is that we never take the results of a census, which is a static picture, as being the defining role for, for the recommendations we have. We always say places are growing older, because Canada is growing older as a country. But, you know, in individual places, you need to plan for and recognize that places are also growing younger.
Okay, yeah, John, sorry, John, we're gonna, we're gonna maybe just take a quick recess. We're gonna get the clerk to give you a call, so you can call into the Zoom, and we might be able to hear you better that way.
Okay, very good. Thanks. My cellphone, if you could, please.
So, John, if you just stay on there, and then I'll call you on my cellphone, and put the audio from the cellphone up to the microphone. So, John, just mute yourself on your end, so we don't get that feedback, and then just give me one second, and I'll give you a call. Thank you, John.
Just to the member of council, you're absolutely right. I think the county is going to be growing younger. It's still older as a profile, but, but our plan does take that into account.
Okay, okay, thank you. Counselor McNaughton?
I was just wondering, so I, I, I think there is more detail regarding, that, that will be married with the asset management plan, but I was just interested to hear, as, as I sit on the Accessibility Committee, the accessible design features or policies that are considered, or that will be considered, so that, so that I can take that back to the committee. We've had lots of discussions about this plan at committee, but aren't necessarily, but I'm not necessarily sure about the concrete details, potentially.
Through the chair to Counsel McNaughton, I will be at the November 17 Accessibility Committee meeting, and we are going to be talking in greater detail on the summary of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, but every element and every change, very similar to the building code, which isn't specifically referenced in this document, but compliance and, and AODA standards are a part of every change and implementation. And actually, one of those changes that we're working on is also getting presented as a project to the Accessibility Committee. It, it's, it's one of the action items that's listed, of one of the 55 action items, but it's intended to be incorporated throughout the entire document, and I'm not sure if John had anything he wanted to add to that, but that, that is the intention.
And it was listed on a, as a short term, I believe.
Yeah, and just to avoid any feedback at my end here, I'm just gonna disappear from the, from the screen, but I'm gonna be on the phone somewhere else in the office. So if you can still hear me, the only thing I'm adding to that is that, you know, the master plan is a guiding document, so there's any number of details that, you know, represent best practices as it relates to accessibility, you know, inclusion, equity provisions, all this sort of stuff that need to be undertaken in the normal fashion. So, you know, the plan is set out well for, for, you know, following best practices, and so council should rest, be, rest assured of that. Does that help? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you good, we can hear you fine now, John. Thank you.
Thank you. And just generally, I like to, I like some of the values that are presented in this plan. I have more questions for round two, but did want to say that the general, the other type of accessibility, being able to access water for our residents, and being able to access the trail with ease, particularly vis a vis new developments, these were great values represented in that list of priorities. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Counselor Pennell.
Thank you. When we had meetings, like, I'm thinking in Bedeck or Ameliesburg, and I realized that was in spending money that was we have to spend. But having said that, does that fall under the master plan as well?
Through the chair to Counselor Pennell, actually, the Roblin Lake Master Plan is one of the action items in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So yes, they do dovetail together, and we have been, because this plan's been ongoing for a while, the last set of capital projects did, in, were informed a fair bit from the public consultation and the development of this plan. So yes, actually, Roblin Lake being a primary hub location is why we are working through that capital project process now. It is identified in this plan.
Follow-up? Yeah.
The reason why I'm asking, there's gotta be a buy-in by the public in a lot of this stuff. There was very specific questions at that last meeting that I believe was recorded by the people, but no one has ever got back to them to, yes, that's, can be done, or no, that can't. And it's hard to get people to buy into something if they can't get an answer.
Through the chair to Counselor Pennell, from the last public consultation that happened, the road, the drivable roadway was a big topic of conversation with a lot of public suggestions and feedback, and we have had to go back to the Operational Services Department and the Water Waste Water Department and work with Development Services first to have an understanding about what they require before we start moving with that next step. So the, the feedback that came out of that meeting meant that we had to go back to our operational departments and gather more information to come forward and be able to provide some alternative options, because what was requested does not comply with the Water Waste Water Department. So we are working through that now.
Just-
Yeah, last follow-up, yeah.
One last question. The reason why I asked is, one of the big concerns before they could start anything was baseball nets. And the question was asked by many people at that meeting, is that can be included to buy the proper nets, so you can't have walkways around the both baseball diamond with ball's governor. And that was the biggest concern, I would say, probably, the majority. And we were told at the meeting, yep, we're gonna check into that, we'll get back to you. And in fairness, you were not at the meeting, so.
Through the chair to Counselor Pennell, I was not at the meeting, but I was fully informed, which is why I'm able to speak to the item about the Operational Service Department and the Water Waste Water. I'm also very well aware of the requests regarding baseball and the safety concerns that were identified. The netting for the west side of the ball diamond has actually already been purchased from that feedback, but the determination of whether there could be a walkable path around the exterior of the ball field is a work in progress. It's not finalized, and all of the information has been received, but there are some background work that needs to be done to be able to inform the next steps for public consultation.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I believe it's page six. It's the $97,000. And I guess it's earmarked for the development of the plan, is my understanding, so, but that was in the 2022 budget, so we're just rolling that money over for the last three years. I, I guess, when Zach, like, how long, when do we stop rolling things over?
Through the chair, Counselor Nyman, thank you for wanting to clarify the funding component of the project. The work that Sierra Planning and Management has done has been fully paid for. It is off the books. The project is completed.
Okay, so then, can I have a couple of follow-ups here? So then, well, thanks for the explanation. So then, that brings me to page 11, and it's referencing another page here, too, I believe. Oh, page eight? Oh, page eight, there's references to it, but I just, I guess, for me, I go to the other options considered and without the adopted plan, the county risk. And there's two, four, six, seven of them there. Some of them, I don't want you to take this the wrong way, but what this report is telling us is we haven't really managed our, our department here very good because they're telling us, you know, it's inconsistent decision-making, it's service delivery fragmented, it's all those things. And I have a hard time believing that, you know, we got this far without being able to do some of that stuff. So, you know, and I guess, you know, the one in there is, you know, we need to adopt the plan to replace playground equipment. Well, I know we've replaced the playground equipment over the years and I'm sure there's a plan because I'm also sure that we have people inspecting those playground equipments. So I guess, you know, to me, I'm a little disappointed that this is coming like this because it's kind of giving us a black eye to say that we're not doing our jobs. So I'm not very happy about that because I think we have done some. Everybody can have improvements, but this is not, to me, not very good. And then while you can answer that, but the last remark I would have is the, the ice rentals. And I know that there is, you know, everybody's got, the ice has been allotted and it's all documented that it's being used. But there is times that you go into the rinks and nobody's there. Nobody's using them. We have employees there. The rinks are open. There is, what I'm hearing is there is people who would be willing to pay to get that ice. And we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot when we're limiting people to use that ice when it's not being used. We have, everything's being operated there, but nobody's using it. Why aren't we giving people that option?
Through the chair, Counselor Nyman, thank you for your questions because I agree with you. The recreation team has been doing a pretty good job up till this point. And it's not really about our current measurables in our operation because right now we are continuing to budget to the best of our ability and replace what is in most desperate need of repair for consequence of failure. What this plan is talking about is having guiding principles so that when, for example, Prince Edward Pickleball comes forward and are wanting the municipality to become a project of community interest, I did reference the initial work that was done through the Parks and Rec Master Plan to identify a shortfall in courts and that this is something that the municipality would want to be interested in. It's, it would also be similar to, for example, to the Pickton Fairgrounds. This plan proposes a recreation plan for the Pickton Fairgrounds so that potentially that the next public interest group that wants to add something else on top of, say, the exhibition grounds, that we actually have some guiding principles and some plans so that the properties can be aligned. For example, there, there are some challenges with a ball diamond on top of an exhibition ground and the splash pad associated with the exhibition ground. So it's, it's, this isn't, I don't believe this is a black eye. I think we have been doing a pretty good job at moving forward and fixing what is in most need of repair and reaching out to the public. But this is our future guiding document that will help inform decisions and help inform the requests that come forward from the public on potentially what needs to be where, of course, with also current and informed consultation. This is more of about our guiding principles on, on how we're moving forward. I think we've got it pretty good so far, but, but this will help us refine the needs of the community. And then if that's, if you don't mind, I'll answer the ice question. Is that okay? So certainly what you're mentioning is the whole reason for an allocation review. Currently, our ice allocation policy allows people to be allocated ice for the whole season and within ten days return multiple hours of ice that are then very difficult to sell because people tend to pre-plan their ice usage. So a part of the allocation review would be to tidy that up so we don't have this last minute ice given up, but that we also have these pockets of ice that are not used regularly to be considered on a reduced last minute rate to be able to fill those ice slots, just as you were mentioning.
Okay, quickly, yeah.
So just to the, the counsel's question, so yeah, I mean, it's not about suggesting that the municipality and staff are not able to find solutions as they go forward, but, but I can tell you that the worst thing in the world for a municipality to have is a, is a master plan, whether it be a transportation master plan or a wastewater plan or a Parks and Recreation Plan that is received for information but is not adopted. Because then staff have absolutely, they just have quicksand underneath them in terms of coming forward with what, what the relevance of the document is. And as I mentioned, this is a guiding document to help you make intelligent investment decisions going forward. And, and I'll just add, and this is a really serious point, is the A M P and the Rec Master Plan, we take into account asset management. Now you have a document that you're gonna want to put into play for asset management. And whilst it's true and it needs to align with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, you must realize that the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is a higher order document than the Asset Management Plan because the nature of asset management is you're dealing with all assets, core and non-core, and what exists presently and the service levels presently, whereas the Rec Master Plan goes into substantive detail about how you provide the service of recreation. So the good news is that those two documents can be aligned as you go forward because the A M P clearly says, or your staff reports related to it clearly say that as plans come on stream, you work to align them. So if you've got a good asset management plan and you have a good Parks and Rec Master Plan, I think both council and staff are going to have the tools that they need to make decisions about, you know, what you should do when pickleball turns up and wants more or when cricket turns up or the boat launches become a problem or the Roblin Lake Master Plan process gets into level, a level of detail where it needs to be resolved or ice usage isn't being used effectively, you know, which is a waste of public money. So very important that I make that emphasis, that pitch that you need to adopt a plan because if you don't, it's not only sort of status quo, you're actually going backwards. So it's very important to have a policy that's there as a guideline.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Counselor Nyman, do you have one? Quick follow up?
Yeah, just one quick comment. And I appreciate the, the explanation from both parties there. I guess, you know, I just go to there's legislation that we have to follow in the parks and everything else. And I guess, you know, I'm just, and I know we do that. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the way I read this is, it wasn't making us look good. And I just, you know, I, I know that we got people that can do that and we follow the legislation and everything. And I guess, to me, I guess, you know, I didn't need to pay ninety-seven thousand dollars to say that, you know, here we weren't doing things right.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Counselor St. Jean, followed by Counselor Brandhorst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Lisa and John and everybody that was involved in this. I know it's an extend, very extensive report and it took a lot of time. It's interesting. I think the first chatter of a Recreation Master Plan happened about twenty years ago. So here we are. I think it was two thousand four or five when it first came forward. Former staff member John Zander and tried to bring it forward. So I'm happy it's here. I, I really appreciate all of the suggestions. That's a lot of suggestions. I do have a couple of questions though with regards to, I guess it's page forty, forty-eight of our report. Recommendation number forty-six and forty-seven with regards to undertake review and evaluation of underused county-owned parcels, essentially, you know, identifying potential surplus properties. And then the subsequent motion about creating a disposition policy. It's in the category of midterm, three, both are three to five years out. And I wonder, is there any capacity or any, maybe it's better to bring that forward and do it sooner? You know, we, we're, we have been seriously looking at property dispositions in other ways, in other areas, our old fire halls, that kind of stuff. I'm wondering if that's not a step that should be expedited. And are there challenges to doing that? Okay, whoever wants to answer that, yeah.
Sure, you know, it's, it's on our work plan and it's something we need to address and get before council very early in the new year on account of the activities that'll be occurring later next year. So it is on our work plan. We just haven't been able to turn our full attention to it. But with this out of the way and endorsed, we can begin to turn our attention to some of these items that are critical for early next year for council's decision, but.
But those two in particular are slated for three to five years out. And I'm wondering, is there, is there capacity or to, to move them forward to, into the next one and two years instead of the next three to five years?
If I could just answer from the Rec Master Plan perspective, just, just to be helpful, just before the C R answers that, because this is a guiding document, the recommendations are there, you know, the, both the timing of individual recommendations, you have absolute freedom to move them to where you think is appropriate. Just from a, it doesn't reduce the integrity of the document unless it's so substantial that you're turning timing on its head. And I don't think you are in what you're suggesting there. So from a Red Master Planning perspective, that's, that's perfectly fine. Again, I think it's about just making sure that, you know, going through the process of dispositions as it relates to lands follows the prescriptions of the Rec Master Plan as the higher order document compared to the A M P, which is a lower order document.
Okay, so yeah, I'm thinking there may be a motion to, if it's required, I'm not sure if it is, to, to again, expedite that and move that, that potential process, that identified process into a sooner timeframe than what's being suggested in the Recreation Master Plan.
Okay, we'll leave, we'll, we have a few more questions. I'll leave that with you and then.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I'm not gonna bring anything out just yet.
Okay.
Can I get a second one?
Sure.
And then, then I'll be quiet and I'll work on the motion.
Sounds good.
With regards to, where am I here? So I guess this would be our page forty-five and forty-six. Undertake user fee study and subsidization policy. I see that's in the next one to two years. I'd just like to say, I think that's great. And I think we do need to seriously look at that. And as we know, there's always pushback when it comes to user fees. You know, you, you raise the rental of a town hall by five dollars and people go crazy. But I think we do, if we're going to be honest with our, our community and everybody, we need, we need to be realistic about our rates. So I'm very much looking forward to seeing that move forward in the next, I guess that would be for the twenty-seven budget then likely, for whoever gets to deal with that. And I'll sneak a third one. That was more of a comment, but the question about developing outdoor pools and large amenities, things like that, they're gonna need a lot of work and a lot of money. So I'm wondering, that's something that's gonna be worked on in the background? And to me, those are, those are long-range plans, six plus years. Should we be working on that a little bit later? Because there are some pretty heavy, heavy, heavy costs that are gonna come in with any, any kind of large outdoor infrastructure, whether it's a pool or splash pad or whatever. And given all of the, the financial constraints that we have right now, I don't see them getting much better anytime soon. So I'm wondering, is it, is that something that can be pushed back a little bit because of the level of work and cost that's gonna be involved in any one of those outdoor projects?
Through the chair to Counselor St. Jean, absolutely. And, you know, through the consultation that we've done, we certainly have identified a need and as some master plans are being developed, it's just, it's an action item to ensure that it's explored, it's not missed on what we heard. But certainly the opportunity, the partnership, the sponsorship would be, you know, a key driver of the when. But just really identifying that this is feedback that was received on, on a shortfall in our community that would be benefited will just be one of those guiding principles as we're developing bigger plans. But certainly it's not considered to be in the short, short term. And if you want to move it along a little, a little further down the ways, it's, you know, some of the, the items like Operational Services has already done the boat launch review. That wasn't really scheduled kind of yet. Some things will pivot based on community direction and, and, and community need, but certainly there's no problem with that.
Okay, because I, you know, I know just from a fundraising standpoint, a splash pad, you're probably three plus years just fundraising. So I, I think it's a real, a little bit ambitious to think we can do that in three to five years. So anyways, okay, no, that helps, that helps me to understand that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go Counselor Brandhorst.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair. And also thank you, Counselor St. Jean, because you lead perfectly into my question, which is, there's great content here about collaboration with the school board and you, and utilizing, sorry, that mishap, the capital and the assets that they already have. And I'm wondering how, like, the, the plan kind of touches on it, but I would like a little bit more thought to the vision behind it, which is how do we keep that collaboration moving on? How do we do long-term asset planning if we want to take teams such as with long, long-term projects such as like a basketball court? That could be something at, like C M L has one, Athol has one, sorry, C M L School, Athol School has one. And maybe other schools. So then we, maybe we don't need to invest into that long-term vision publicly. But maybe we see value and maybe one of the schools wants a walking path. But we see value into investing development dollars in that. So like, I'm just curious on, how do you expect that collaboration to go in the long term, especially when we start looking at these plans three to five years away or six plus years away?
I see Jonathan has his hand up, so we'll go there.
Thank you. Through you, through you to the counselor, a lot of these obviously get into any particulars, but, you know, you do have a level of duplication that is natural and is between school boards as well. And so the idea that a principle of this plan is to try and do everything you can to partner, that's gonna be important. And the pandemic, just to walk away here, the pandemic emphasized that there is, there is, there is challenge to getting access to the schools. And so a lot of municipalities are moving toward the idea of having their own municipal gymnasium or other kinds of indoor space developed innovatively, walking tracks in arenas, what have you. So I don't dismiss the, the fact that, you know, under financial crunch, it's not something that you necessarily need. It's a want. It's long-term, but I think it's essential that you have a master plan that gives the staff and council and certainly the mayor the opportunity to work with colleagues and say, look, how can we work better with the school boards? And so you put that out as a pitch and then, you know, you try and work as best you can through joint use agreements with individual school principals and school boards to, to, to make things happen. Because we hear continually in our consultation, which was very robust, our consultation heard that Prince Edward County is doing a great job in the arenas, but people, younger people moving to the county are looking for other activities. You know, dry use floor, we call it. So whether it's a gym or a field house or some other opportunity, it's, it's things where you don't have to wear skates. It's the opportunity to go in and have other kinds of unstructured recreation and that's what keeps young families certainly happy. We heard that loud and clear. So however it is implemented, I think, you know, the idea of getting access to facilities is important. So completely agree with the counselor's observation that, you know, there are real challenges and we've got to use the schools better. How you do it, you start with a strong plan. And I think that, that's, that's really the message. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Brandhorst. Your follow-up?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. I see kind of what you referenced with COVID and needing more of our own. I traditionally agreed with more of your later argument of why not use assets that are already established and funded and create stronger partnerships? If the partnerships were not strong enough during COVID, I think that is more of a failure of humankind rather than a failure of us not providing enough space and gymnasium space for the community. I think that is more of a, we need to break down barriers. I think that is more of a, we need to break down barriers better, and we need to work as a team better and collaborate better. And so that's why I do agree with that, but I don't, I do find it a little scary when we're not doing long-term planning and the community is saying that we need more gym space, we need to provide those things, because those were amenities that maybe they had in another community, but that doesn't mean that we can't resourcefully think well with what we already have. So like, I appreciate, I appreciate it, and I do agree with you, joint use agreements and strong agreements and creating those relationships will be tricky, and that will be the way to go, but it is, yeah, I'll stop there.
Okay. Counselor Maynard.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Lot to digest. I just, I want to ensure that this, this plan has maximum amount of flexibility, so as things evolve, that we are able to, that we're able to shift our priorities. So, I mean, you know, yes, we've got a, we've got a town and a large village, but maybe to the author, so we are in the unique, somewhat unique situation where we're about twenty-five percent urban or small urban and seventy-five percent rural, right? So how, that is always been the difficult challenge, is to get the services where the people require, you know, where they are. So how do you, I don't, it's hard to see in this plan how that, like, I know we've got some small hubs, but they're pretty insignificant, right? They're, what they're going to provide is relatively insignificant. So how do we ensure, A, that our changing demographic is well-served, and B, that our predominantly rural community with, you know, villages and towns scattered throughout are well-served?
Just one sec, Jonathan, we just got to get you off of me here. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll answer that too. I think because of the issue of, you know, it's, in a resource-constrained environment, you have to make some choices, but I do want us to sort of point out that we have primary hubs, which are the large indoor facilities in Pickton and Wellington, secondary hubs, and then Constable and Carrion Place, Rossmore, Northport, you know, Prenia's Cove, outdoor hubs. So they are as a focal point, and I think the commitment of the plan, certainly our plan is, Prince Edward County is a very large and diverse range of communities and conditions, urban, rural. And so my read of the plan is, the conditions are here, the principles are in place to make sure that every community can advocate for what it needs. And of course, it's going to come down to the council chamber and what priorities you can put forward in a capital budget every year and roll out the plan. So flexibility is there in the plan for sure. We don't for one minute think that this is a blueprint, so I think individual plans can come forward. And as Director Lindsay said, you know, the principles are probably the most important part of this document for going forward. So, you know, this is a plan for all aspects of the county, for sure.
Okay, quick follow-up.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that maximum flexibility and that we will evolve. So the follow-up question is on the, on the consultation, you know, like, the data that we received, the input we received, that is the baseline for a lot of these, a lot of this report. And we know that we historically have extremely low, you know, by percentage input. So how do we, how do we put a factor in there for the, for the vocal, so that the vocal minority does not, that we somehow factor in the silent majority? Because I was at a number of those consultation sessions and, you know, maybe if you had a strong opinion, but whether that, I find it, I found it difficult to actually think that that was the, was the sentiment of the, of the community at large. And not to be specific, but, you know, when, when Counselor Powell says, well, somebody wanted this, you know, why don't they have that? Well, I would say, in that particular case, that would not be the sentiment of the community. And I know you can only do so much, but to always, I guess that goes back to continuously, how do we continuously tap in to the community so that this, this plan isn't, isn't static? Because, yeah.
And I really appreciate the question, and I think, through you, Mr. Maynard, I've got in front of me here the outline of the consultation. I really do want every member of council to recognize that the consultation that was done is extremely robust. Six community workshops, hundred and eighty members in attendance, six hundred and eighty-one online survey responses, forty-six stakeholder groups, all detailed survey stuff, and then outreach to the school boards, P F A, Ontario parks, you name it. So that, and you don't need everyone in the community to weigh in, you know, that's a referendum. That's what they do in British Columbia when a big project comes along and it gets put on the, on the slate as a plebiscite or as a referendum. We don't do that in Ontario, so we make sure that our engagement activities try, try to be as representative as possible. So I can't suggest that there aren't squeaky wheels that get, get ahead of the game, but our plans use consultation as one of the inputs. You know, we rest on our experience, we rest on council direction, we rest on staff inputs, best practices, and we, we take advice from members of the public. But to give you an example, you know, everybody wants an indoor pool. You don't see an indoor pool in the recommendations, because we know that it's a bridge too far. So all I would say is, you should celebrate the consultation that was done, but to speak to the council's correct observation going forward, it's quite reasonable, I think, to have open houses or check-ins or surveys at budget time, things like that that can test. And then if you have a particular plan for replacing a park, if you've got a disposition which you're going to suggest, I think you are obligated to go to the public. Those are the ways in which the general public viewpoints, I think, can be, can be brought forward. So we're in total agreement as to the need to make sure that what's done is representative in terms of decision-making, but I think, again, the plan is a very good base for that going forward.
Yeah, Director Lindsay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Maynard, certainly I understand that this plan has been implemented and we have our action items, but to date, there hasn't been a single park project that hasn't moved forward with also consultation, because as things become a little more micro to a particular area, there tends to bring more people to be involved and be interested. So that, that is a commitment that I can make to this council. I think in all departments, we've been doing that to date, and that would continue. We wouldn't be actioning any of these items without engaging with the communities, again, prior to projects going forward.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for the first round, so we'll go to the second round, and we'll try and get through it quickly. Counselor McNaughton.
Thank you. Further to Sam's line of questioning, have, have you been discussing potential agreements with the director of the school board at either H P E D S B or Hastings Prince Edward Public School Board or Algonquin Lake Shore Catholic School Board? Is that something that's started?
Through the chair to Counselor McNaughton, that had started prior to COVID. It is not, it is not something that has been reactivated, but certainly it being identified in the plan that joint use agreements, you know, should be formalized. And, you know, certainly, it's not just for residents to get into the schools, but we also have schools using municipal assets like the Johnson Street Soccer Field. But currently, those negotiations are kind of worked out through the Prince Edward County Soccer Association, and we're brought in on it. But a more robust back-and-forth relationship should, should certainly increase the user ability for our community. It's, it's not lost on the COVID times closing down, particularly for P C I, for many of the gymnasium activation sports. So I believe with some give and take from both ends, there'll be more opportunities on both sides.
I think we've already seen a really excellent example of the school board and the county working together and at Athel South Marysburg with the playground usage, and I think that's a great model. Our rec committee uses gym space at P E C I. And, you know, if, without that type of agreement, our insurance costs and our, our access to the actual school facilities are often changeable, subject to changes in leadership or changes in requirements. And I think that head agreement would be really beneficial for rec committees looking to work with the school board too, particularly if there's a way that we can really have a handle on liability. And understandably, the school board wants to offset their liability, as does municipality as much as possible, working together. I think there's a strong way to do that and not have to put in, you know, not have to duplicate assets when they're right there. I loved, I loved that comment and had that flag to how far have those conversations gone. I think it would be really great to see that ongoing, including A L C, the Algonquin Lake Shore District School Board as well, because they've got a couple of other neighborhoods that are going to have recreation space that currently kids break into to have a great time. And don't say it was me that ratted on them, because I support that. Can I keep going? Because that was just, I can wait till.
Yeah, maybe one more, and then we're going to.
Thank you. So, the, there is, and I think it was in the forties, I don't have it written down, one of the recommendations is to look at naturalization, and it was checked off in the ongoing category. I'm just wondering if there's an actual granular plan ongoing currently for that? If there is one that's currently in development? Or is it just sort of the piecemeal work, seeking grants, et cetera, that community groups and our operations department and recreation and facilities have done sort of on an ad hoc, bit-by-bit basis? Or if there's an actual, like, here's our list of priorities, let's get this area, like, areas identified, et cetera? And if there is not a plan, are there plans to develop a plan?
Through the chair to Counselor McNaughton, it has been exciting to have the opportunity to work with Albert on naturalization. One of the areas we're starting is by determining the areas that we are going to be cutting grass moving forward in the new tender. And once those areas are determined, then the naturalization plans to implement. So we are working in align with Albert from Environmental Services on, on a, on an implementation. I would say it's in the works, and we are trying not to be moving forward just doing what we've done before without engaging, if there's an opportunity, to make some changes. And the new grass-cutting tender is, I think you'll see is our first start to trying to implement a plan of change.
Okay. Mayor Ferguson?
Thanks very much. Not so much a question as a comment. The whole process began in October twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, actually, former council. I'm thankful that this plan has come forward to this council. I think it's an extraordinary document. There's, there's so much in this, it's so fulsome, it's a lot to digest, it's going to be a lot for the public to digest, but it is a guiding document. And I want to thank you very much for all the work you put into this and John put into this. And I will say, I've got a considerable amount of confidence in, in what you have presented and the fact that you have been the lead in working with John on this. I just think it's a terrific step forward. Now, the challenge is that next, not next year, the year after, there will be another council. And as you said earlier, this is into the next decade, so it's not just the next council, it's council after that as well, who are going to have to be, you know, brought up to speed and, and, you know, given, given basically the same presentation and changes and amendments that you will undertake with the assistance of staff and consultants. And, you know, I hope that those councils recognize the amount of work that has gone into this, into this plan as a guiding document, as mentioned earlier. It's taken a long, long time to get here, and I think we should all be grateful that you have brought it forward in the, in the way in which you have. I, you know, I kept looking for, well, what's missing? And I really couldn't identify anything. Thanks very much, Lisa.
Okay. Counselor St. Jean, do you have a motion that you're looking to introduce?
I did send an email to the clerk, so I'm hoping that she took my rough language and was able to smooth it out.
Yeah, so that staff be directed to prioritize recommendations numbers four and forty-seven, sorry, forty-six and forty-seven of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, with an expectation for implementation to commence within the short-term timeframe, years one to two.
That's, that's what I was looking for.
Is there a second or, second before we discuss it? Okay, second by Counselor Hirsch discussion, yeah, Counselor Mayor.
Forty-six and forty-seven.
Yeah. If we could, if we could articulate the page and articulate those, those particular items, you don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, also for the, for the public, right? Like, we're pulling something specific out of this plan, so just.
Okay, any other questions on this motion?
Well, I'm asking that those be, that those be read as part of the motion.
That the language within the recommendations be read out loud?
So, through the chair, recommendation number forty-six is to undertake a review and evaluation of the underused county-owned parkland parcels to determine whether they are deemed surplus to the recreation needs of the community. And recommendation number forty-seven is create a disposition policy based on best practices and to consider other county uses of surplus, underused parkland, and open-space properties. The appropriateness of disposing of a property will require careful consideration and must include a public engagement process. So both are identified in the midterm years, three to five. The amending motion is to move it to short-term years, one to two.
Okay. Counselor Nyman, do you have a question on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just on number forty-seven. Do we not already have a policy on that? I'm just wondering, why are we duplicating things?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have one. It was in the context of general parcels of property. So, I mean, again, it could be reviewed in the context of this plan, and I think that's really what this is asking. So it's not that we don't have one, and so if it's done, then it gets moved into the checked-off box. So I don't think there's any harm in the way it's written, but it could be reviewed in the context of what's coming out of this plan.
Okay. You have follow-up?
Yeah, so I guess my point is, if we got one, we don't want to spend time on making up another one just for this. I was, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Counselor St. Jean.
Yeah, just to maybe add to Counselor Nyman, the intention is to expedite, if it's already ongoing, I want, I'd like to see it expedited, because I think it's important that it happens sooner rather than later. So that's the whole intent of shifting the timeline.
Okay. If everybody's clear on this motion, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor?
Two, three, four.
Eight. That carries. Okay, so now back to the main motion as amended. Oh, do you have another question, Counselor McNaughton? Okay, quickly, please.
Yeah, just further to the naturalization question. Is this something, is this something that you are planning to? It says ongoing, I take, but it, it does sound like not, not a fully envisioned process. Is that something that you'd be willing to consult the environmental advisory committee on?
Through the chair to Counselor McNaughton, certainly.
Thanks.
All right, so the main motion's on the floor as amended. All those in favor? That carries. Thank you. Thanks, Lisa. Thank you, Jonathan. All right, that will move us to item six point two. It's a report of the Development Services Department dated November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five regarding E V eight hundred water and wastewater capacity allocation policy amendments. Can I get a mover and second to put this on the floor, please? Mover and seconder. Counselor St. Jean, Counselor Fennell.
Okay, St. Jean, Fennell motion that report D S seventy-three, twenty-twenty-five regarding E V. regarding E V eight hundred water and wastewater capacity allocation policy amendments be received and that the updated E V eight hundred water and wastewater capacity allocation policy available as attachment three to this report be approved.
Okay, thank you, Councilor St. Jean. I see Director Landstrass here. Do you have anything to add?
Sure, through the Chair to the Committee. So again, you're all aware of this policy and how it's been before you. So the original policy was approved in 2010. There is no mechanism within that policy, policy to expire any allocations that we have given to developers. So staff did come before Committee in September 2025 to outline kind of the broader picture of uncommitted reserve capacity. And that outlook does stress the remaining allocation should be carefully planned and allocated. So based off that, the, that information precipitates some policy amendments within our policy document to allow staff to administer the policy more effectively. Again, the larger amendment that I outlined is the ability for us to expire capacity. It's outlined within the draft document as three years. Based off of that approach, the document is forward looking. So it's based off of amendments that we put in place now would be utilized for new agreements, new servicing allocation that we're dealing with. It's looking forward, not backwards to capacity that's already been allocated. Staff continue to work towards a response for the Committee and intern council with respect to rationalizing the larger reasonable rate of growth to inform that broader infrastructure conversation. This policy itself will allow us in that interim to consider capacity allocation parameters. And we anticipate when we have that larger conversation, which then moves us to capital infrastructure projects, more capacity at that point in time, there'd be a review of the policy at that point in time as well. So with that, I could speak to some comments from the audience at this point, if that's helpful for you or if we.
I think that would be good.
Sure. So I did want to just acknowledge in terms of the language difference. So I just point you to in the policy, we are speaking to council. The location where we're addressing the county is in the draft language that would be, we would be placing in subdivision agreements and site plan control agreements. So that language is consistent with what we use in those agreements, which is why there is a difference between them. I will outline from that perspective. And in my opinion, doesn't create any conflicts in terms of how we are allocating. We are allocating at final registration of the plans, not at when we're registering the subdivision agreements. So we're including the language in the subdivision agreements. However, we're allocating at final registration. So there is no ability for staff to extend any approvals with delegated authority at that point in time. So if we are putting that information into our subdivision agreements, what it allows us to do is review at the point in time we get to three years, whether someone has actually used their allocation or not. It allows the county to have the conversation of whether we want to enforce the agreement and withdraw that allocation or not. What the policy directs us to do at that point is have a conversation. Staff can internally have those conversations. We would do that anyways. However, we have the ability and what I have done in the past is if you're enforcing a large portion of that agreement, you are typically going back to Committee and council for their opinion of how you are doing that as well. So to me, the language lines up for how this policy informs our internal procedure. So clarifies a little bit. I heard some language in requesting extensions that wouldn't come into play for this because we are not doing any draft extensions of subdivisions. We're allocating at final registration of the plans. There was language regarding the area-specific D C bylaw. If Committee would like us to do so, we can mirror the language we have for connection charges in the policy and we can bring those updates back when this policy comes back to council at the next stage. So if that is of interest, staff are amenable to moving forward in that direction.
Okay, I'll go to questions. I have Councilor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's great, Crystal. First, I just wanted to mention two things. I think there's some, some really good stuff in this, in this new policy. Paragraphs six D and E, for those who want to follow along, which say that council may essentially prioritize allocation for developments which are undertaking affordable housing and also allocate developments which are, where the developer is willing to enter into front ending agreements. These are very helpful to us and it's great that we can actually, you know, sort of up the priority for those projects as opposed to others. So that was just a compliment in that respect. As far as your remarks on, on Ms. Bothwell's comments, I accept that pretty good. What happens with the reference to connection charges? I know right now we have, we have a mix in the county. We have connection charges everywhere else and, and the D Cs in Wellington. We have a D C, we have a countywide D C study happening, which we will be seeing soon-ish, hopefully. And ultimately, my guess is we will end up just the D Cs. So would this require an amendment then when that happens?
Through the Chair to Councilor Hirsch. You are pointing to a larger conversation we're having internally in terms of what is better to stay under the Development Charges Act or to point towards the Municipal Act? And I'm not sure we're fully there yet in terms of what is the best approach. I'm sure as we're all aware, there's been quite a lot of Development Charges Act changes on the provincial level. There hasn't been as much from a connection charges perspective with the Municipal Act. So that could weigh into these conversations as we move forward. But with your original comment in terms of what that provides to us, I will outline that we outline multiple triggers in terms of when we can allocate servicing within this policy. The one that we are impacted the most by is when we are registering plans of subdivision and when we are looking at site plan control agreements. And those both would occur before the connection charges outline within this document. So we're often looking at what trigger do we hit first? That's where we're allocating the policy. So it doesn't come into effect for the larger applications we're looking at for more units. Those are typically, the trigger we're hitting first is when we're registering those plans of subdivision and site plan control. So that is what is the mechanism we're using when we're allocating, not necessarily the connection charges clause at that point in time. However, we can mirror the same language for the area-specific bylaw for D C in this document. And then once we have the larger conversation of whether we're sticking with Municipal Act controls versus development charges controls, we would update the bylaw at that point in time.
Good follow up. Just quick follow up. Thank you for that clarification. And, and yes, I would, I would, I would agree that, that in between now and when council finally approves this, if you put in the thing about the area specific, that will clean it up. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Fennell.
My biggest concern as we move ahead. We, in Wellington and Betecor, we give away all this water rights. But is it possible that we can put a time limit on it? If you haven't started, it goes to the next person. Because we are being held hostage, the municipality, because of the way water rights are given away. We had a lot of people prepared to go ahead. Some were businesses that could create jobs in the county and we couldn't let them go ahead because there was no water. And yet, who knows? It could be five years before there's, can we control that?
Through the Chair to Councilor Fennell. Yes, the intent of the policy updates is to allow us for any servicing allocation moving forward, we can include an expiration clause. So we, the policy is drafted now to allow for three years for that allocation. So what we would be looking at is in any development agreements, any subdivision agreements or site plan control agreements, we would include the language that would allow us to consider if that capacity is not used within three years from when we have allocated it. We have the ability to have that conversation about whether we will revoke that capacity and have the ability to provide it elsewhere.
Quick follow up? Yeah, go ahead. I listened to your words, we can do that. I'm looking for some, a little stronger, that we will do that. Then it becomes fair to every developer in the county. Well, it's very iffy, but shall.
Through the Chair, I take your point. And I can take the policy back, see if there's any areas between now and council where I can strengthen that language. I can also bring forward an outline of how we would implement from a procedural perspective to be able to consider. From my perspective, we are aligning on what the internal goal would be that anytime these expirations come up would be the intent. Is this the opportunity where, that we want to use to reallocate this capacity? I will also mention as well, we included some additional language in the policy related to subdivision phasing. So we're also seeing and a point for why it's important and why staff are recommending the policy changes currently is that we do have quite a lot of subdivision agreements and end plan registrations sitting in front of us in our office right now. To catch those and be able to put expirations in them, we do need this policy to be updated to allow us to do that. At the same time, we're looking at that, it draws our attention to the overall subdivision agreement and sub, plan of subdivision draft approval, moving it to final. There's some mechanisms we can use to be more clear in our draft approvals as to what phasing related to allocation we're looking at. And this will give us the ability to look more equitably across the developers within the municipality to make sure that we are allocating in the best possible way we can for the community.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions on this one? Councilor Grossow?
Yes. Now, what happens now if Doug Ford has his way with the development charges that are delayed? Does it change his policy?
Through the Chair, currently, the majority of our lands are related to connection charges. We have the area-specific one in, in Wellington. In terms of what we're looking at, when we're looking at the capacity, it's more we're looking at what capacity there is in the plant. So in terms of what those D Cs, like they're looking at growth further out in terms of what people are contributing for growth and development, I don't see the, the changes they're looking at right now change from providing your amount or your D Cs at building permit issuance versus occupancy. I don't foresee that being a large issue for us as the majority of what we are served or allocating towards are those larger plans of subdivision, which that trigger occurs sooner when we're registering the plans.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Councilor McNaughton?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to say thank you for what you've suggested regarding, including Wellington, the, the area-specific Wellington language. But I would also, and I heard your explanation about how it would probably live and breathe, but I, I would urge you to actually, I've, I've not had a full chance to kind of reconcile all those few locations where it is mentioned. I would look to ensure that that language is clear and cogent and reconciles the mention of council or whether it's clearly a staff delegation for those relinquishments. Thanks.
Councilor Fennell?
Yeah, just one quick follow up. So we got subdivision agreements made with nothing happening. When that starts to go ahead, are they under development charges at the time the agreement was made or at the present? Because we're looking at our development charges.
Through the Chair, some of it is dependent on when application, like what steps we're at. There is in terms of, so site plan specifically, you lock in your D Cs based off of when you submit your site plan control application. However, if you don't go ahead and build anything within two years, you then have whatever the current D C rate is at the point in time when you get your building permit. So I anticipate, I don't know off the top of my head what the, the setup is for plans of subdivision, subdivision agreements, but I would anticipate it is similar to that setup. So there is the ability, if you don't build out within a certain phase of time, you would have, you'd be subject to the more current D C rates.
I appreciate getting back to us and let us know where Betecor wants to stand now. Because it's important as we move ahead in this county.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on this policy? See none, so it looks like we'll take another look at it at council with some, some updates, maybe next, in a couple of weeks. So motions on the floor, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you. That moves us to item six point three, report of the Operational Services Department dated November 13th, 2025, regarding sidewalk winter maintenance program overview. Can I get a mover and seconder to put this one on the floor, please? Councilor Prinsen, seconded by Councilor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Prinsen, Nyman, motion that report O P S dash nineteen dash twenty twenty five regarding the sidewalk winter maintenance program overview be received for information.
Okay, thank you. See, Mr. Brians is here. Do you have anything to add or are you just here to answer questions?
Through you, Chair. I'm, there's a lot in the report, so I will try to answer as much as I can here.
Okay, any questions from the Committee? Councilor Maynard?
Thank you. So I'm looking for, and I appreciate that, I appreciate the report. It's, it's well done. I have a specific, I'm going to ask for a little bit of a adjustment in one of the winter plow routes, but I want to discuss it first. So surprisingly, currently in Consecon, I think even with the revised, right? We've got some streets that we're plowing that maybe we don't need to. But I really, I would like to add that west side of County Road twenty nine, Mill Street. If, if, but if you want to pull up the map, so on the, on the south side of Mill Street or County Road twenty nine, we, we do both sides of the sidewalk. When we get on the other side of the bridge and it's new sidewalk, we do, we do one side. On this map, we've got Pigtail Lane and Porter Street and a section of twenty nine above. I did the math. I think it's maybe about an extra two or three hundred feet if we take out some of those, some of those others. And I think it's, it's, it's important because on that side, that's where the library is. If we have people that are coming in, you know, the cross and come in Lakeside Drive and, you know, walk on that, on that west side. And I'll also say that on the, on the east side, so I know because I watched the snow plow comes up as far as, as far as my house and that's where it stops. And that drives back down that way anyways, right? Because it's a dead end. So this is really just a loop. And I think, you know, we can take Pigtail Lane, Porter Street, possibly Bay Avenue, which is a very low traffic area, right? And often the sidewalk's not in great shape anyway. So I just, how do I, do you want me to try and do that amendment now? Or would you like to work with me on it? I did, I did speak to someone kind of, you know, roughly about this, so. No, actually, my driveway gets, my driveway gets the pile of snow from the sidewalk, but that's okay.
Jeff, do you have anything to?
Yeah, through the Charity Council. So we can definitely look at a lot of different options. It's going to take a little bit of thought process and you'll also have to look at the bylaw for sidewalk closure. Because right now, as it stands, those sections of sidewalk that you're talking about are in the closure part. So that would have to come back to council for approval to change.
Some of them are and some of them aren't.
Yeah.
So, so I will, with councils in touch, so we'll talk. And I'll hold this because I could make this amendment as well when it comes back to us at, at council, correct? Yeah, I mean, I know they're in the bylaw. Yes?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I would suggest, you know, we're at committee of the whole, so yes, this wouldn't be ratified until next council. But if you would like to see a, to work with staff on a service level change, I think a motion would be appropriate.
So I could make that a, a, a general motion, right? Without mentioning specific? Okay, if I had a second or for us.
Why don't, we'll come back. I'm going to go to Councilor Nyman first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to go back to a couple of pages. I, I got page seventy nine of the agenda. So it's cost and equipment requirements and whatever. And. And material cost is $5,000. So that's the sand and salt. Then you got six full-time staff, the labor, the cost of the labor. But that's just, I'm assuming that's just the hourly rate. But on top of that would be the overhead. So the cost of the benefits and everything else. And I believe that's, and I could be wrong, but I think it's close to 40%. So if that's correct, then it's actually 130,000. Is that right? Through the chair to Counselor Nyman, this cost for staff and everything has the cost of benefits already allocated in it. So the percentage that the municipality pays for benefits for the employees is also in here as well. We'd never come forward without having all the costs in for that.
Yeah, quick follow.
So then it takes me back to the material cost where it's 5,000. And I know, I think we had a report about the brine for the, for the roads. But I think also at that time, we had discussions on the, using it for the sidewalks, which would cut the cost of the usage of salt and sand down considerably, which we could probably eliminate that $5,000 if we used a brine. You would use, I mean, you'd have some cost, but is that something that we're looking at? And then are we going for a second round? Because if we are, I'll stop.
Yeah, go for it. Let's get it over with.
Okay. So I'll let you, I'll let you answer that first. Through the chair to Counselor Nyman, so yes, we did talk about the use of brine on the sidewalks, which would cut down the amount of salt for sure. Sometimes you still want to use the sand because it's abrasive material, right? But with going over to use the brine system, we got to spend before we can put anything like that in motion. So something would have to look into, look at all the costs. And if it's the wish of council to look to bring something like that forward, would have to come back with the cost and everything for the setup, for the tanks and everything. So, but we have the equipment that I think, from what I had seen, we just need to buy the tank to go on the equipment that we have. So, I mean, because I think we got, what, three tractors? Or anyway, some tractor, a couple of tractors and the track, trackless machine or whatever, which I think would accommodate the equipment to, for the brine. So I'll make a motion at the time for that. And then I guess, I guess the other part is, there are some sidewalks that I don't believe, or, yeah, I guess, that don't have high traffic areas. So pedestrian and maybe traffic, vehicle traffic too. So I guess, how do we identify what sidewalks we are plowing that don't have high volume of pedestrian traffic, that we don't need to plow those sidewalks? And then I know the liability part of it is, well, it's, it's our sidewalk, we need to do that. But I know there's other municipalities who, they have bylaws in place that they will, they will plow the main sidewalks, but they, in the, some of the other streets, backstreets, it will be the homeowner's responsibility to keep it cleared, or you just close the sidewalk. But there's ways around there to limit the liability. The other part is some municipalities posted, I think going into the cities or the towns where they say sidewalks are not maintained, like winter maintenance don't, don't get plowed or whatever. So I'm just wondering, how do we identify what ones we don't need to plow? Through the chair to Counselor Nyman, I'll start with the tractor questions and the, if we have the proper tools. So yes, we have three component tractors and a trackless. With the tank, we'd have to look at pumps and frames built or bought to be able to hold the tanks on our machines. So it'd take a little bit of research and funded for that. As it pertains to the foot traffic, we don't have anything, the municipality doesn't have anything right now to do counts for sidewalks. And I don't know if our Bearcats can do them or anything like that. So it's more or less going to be a visual between our minimum maintenance, our staff, our sidewalk plow staff supervisors, foremen's to really get a handle on how much, a rough estimate of how many people use said sidewalks. And with the legal side of it, we're always an owner, so no matter what, we're liable because we own said, but I'm not going to get into the legal side of things. I believe Sarah's here if she's, yeah, yeah, I'll leave that one for Sarah, okay.
Okay, Counselor Pennell.
I don't see a problem if in a area providing we're doing all the laws right of changing sidewalks, what we do. But the one thing I particularly want to be very careful of is that we're not increasing the amount of sidewalks we're doing. And if we are, then I think that should be a council decision, not an individual from one spot. And I think it's the only fair way to go because our costs, as we look, are going to increase. The other thing, have you any, had a look at Trenton, which has gone away from sidewalks, curves? They just paved a wider spot, paint a white around for pedestrian, and there's no sidewalks included at all. Your snowplow gets there all.
Not sure whether, through you to Counselor Pennell, whether you're referring to in new developments?
Yes.
Yeah, so that would, is a question more for our development group in terms of the engineering standards and the cross-sections of the roadways. So that would be perhaps something we could park until we come back with some engineering or design standards and have that conversation then.
The reason why I asked the question is, I was up to base 31 yesterday, and they said putting curves, sidewalks adds a continuous large amount of money to any subdivision. If there is a way, we could actually get to the point to reduce costs on new housing to make them affordable. If it could be done another way, completely wiping out the sand and salt, and that could be done by truck. Just a thought. I would hope that would be considered.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Pennell. I have Counselor McNaughton, followed by Counselor Branderhorst.
Thank you. That's, that's interesting. We do actually have a couple of multi-use trails in, in the sort of, shall we say, greater Picton area, which I think might be in Picton and a little bit in Halliwell. And in certain areas, I think they can be very, very useful. And one of the things that our last director of, or manager of planning liked the idea of is in very quiet sort of suburban pockets, that there would be a sidewalk on one side of a road and no sidewalk on the other. But I think that's aside from our conversation today. I am actually interested in expansion of service today because Hill Street was rebuilt. It has been excluded from the sidewalk by law because there was a really problematic sidewalk on one side of the street for a very long time that our machines could absolutely not navigate. And it caused an impediment for anyone walking down to the water's edge or anyone walking to the yacht club or anyone walking, anyone walking. So, but that was reconstructed when the waterworks were done and the road was, the road was repaved. The sidewalks now can accommodate the machine and it's a very small stretch of road. And I'm just wondering if, if that can be included. And I would certainly bring that forward as a motion because actually I believe the machines go down one side and then can come back on the other. So that, rather than come back on the road, because I believe that the, and I suspect they're already doing that informally because they have to get back anyway. So if there was a way, so I think it's probably better to make it formal now. The other thing I'm wondering about is there's a longstanding problem on the curve on East Mary Street where there is absolutely nowhere for snow to go, but there's a soft blind curve. And so I, whenever I'm driving through there in winter, there will be, if there's a person walking on the road, it can get a little scary. And I've been the person walking on the road because it's a bit of a, it's a very short road, but with a blind turn, but no acceptable sidewalk to clear the entire space. Is there anything that we can do to ensure that there's a proper area for people to walk where there's very reduced visibility? And sometimes the visibility is even more poor because of piled snow. And I would thank county staff, they've come and removed, when the snow piles have gotten enormous, they've come and removed them. And just if anyone's not familiar with East Mary, there's very little space between houses and the, and the road. And no sidewalk on one side.
Through you, Chair to Council. We can always look into doing whatever council's wishes are. Hill Street, yeah, it's new sidewalk and we can fit. Where our problem is in the operations side of things is the amount of time that it takes us to do what we're doing now. And we've had sidewalks already added in the last couple of years. So we're almost maxed with what we can do with the tools that we have right now. So we've just got to be very careful on overpromising with not the proper tools to get it all done in a timely fashion for everybody as per minimum maintenance standards.
So then if I was to bring a motion, it would be to explore the additional resources required to include that, like 100-meter stretch?
Through the chair, that 100-meter stretch is no problem at all, but like what I meant is just be very careful adding and adding because our resources are so paper-thin that we're not going to have the tools to do all of the jobs that we say we're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Branderhorst.
Really quickly, I just wanted to say as part of this, at this point, I'm really happy with the level of service that we do. I think it's a good compromise on doing what we have to and not being able to do everything because of paper-thin resources. So I just know in Cherry Valley, the, I've heard more of like what Counselor McNaughton has said, which is increasing service rather than decreasing, but at this point, I think it's a good compromise. So thank you for bringing forward the plan.
Counselor St. Jean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor McNaughton, for raising the issue of Hill Street because again, to me, it just looks like it's part of the loop already. And I would hate to see one of our pieces of equipment going, going down the road in the wrong direction when it's so easy to just connect the loop. But I, but so I think that's, if there's a recommendation for a motion regarding that, absolutely, that's the only one I see that's, that that would be effective too. With regards to East Mary Street, it's not just the fact there's a corner and absence of sidewalk, the, there are major obstructions in the sidewalk. And the expectation to hand shovel a sidewalk, I don't think so. If the equipment that we have can't fit on it, the standardized sizes of equipment, I think we're going to have to just recognize it is what it is until you start removing hydro poles and all these various obstructions in some of these areas like East Mary Street, Elk Street, and I'm going to go way over to Ena and, you know, there's a number of these spots that over the years, there has been a number of requests to, to clear it out. I'm sorry to, until you, and Bowery's another one. We have to be realistic in the, in our ability to, to service, and that's what this bylaw does. It says, we can't service this. So therefore, we have to take it off the list. I wouldn't want to be a resident living there and having to deal with it at times. And I, you know, I've had those same concerns from residents on East Mary Street, but the physical, the physical, what's there physically is what we have to deal with, and we can't change it.
Counselor Prinzen.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to chime in on the, on the whole, and support staff on the whole comments about seeing the sidewalk tractor going down the road. You have to remember, every time we plow a sidewalk, we have to sand a sidewalk, we have to maintain a sidewalk. So, and we don't, and it takes probably 10 times as long to do the sidewalk as it does to run down and then run back the road. So I, I too want to be very careful of adding more. We as a council have approved a ton of subdivisions. And as you can see in every map here, as we improve subdivisions, miles and miles and miles of sidewalks now get thrown on. So unless we're ready to spend a ton of money for more staff, more tractors, more salt and sand, I really think we have to be careful. And I think they do a good job if, you know, I'd like to see one side of the sidewalk get plowed and the other side not. And that's just the way it should be on most roads, I think. But I'm not going to take it away if they think they can do what they have on this plan, but I want to be very careful adding, you know, and you've both thrown Hill Street in, Hill Street as an example, want to be careful adding stuff like that because it does take a lot more time. And I think staff's doing what they can do with what we give them very well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Prinzen raises a good point, and Jeff, you've spoken to it, that as we build new subdivisions and their sidewalks, we have more sidewalks to do. But just to refresh my memory, somebody, is, is that cost not built into development charges that we would have charged a developer? So we have to do it anyway, seems to me.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, the equipment would be covered through development charges, but development charges are a charge, and so they do, are passed along to the homeowner. So it's all part and parcel in my view of, of a holistic design process. And if we want to eliminate sidewalks through design standards or have them on one side only, and I think that's probably a better question to have as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. That's it for first round. Counselor Nyman, I know you had your hand up. Are you looking to put your motion or do you have another question? Okay, let's go to the question first then.
Thank you. And then I have a motion, so, or I have two, I guess. So I want to hear from Sarah about the legal side of it because I know, Jeff, you said we're always, we're the owner and we're always responsible. And I agree with you, and it doesn't matter what happens, the county or municipalities are always going to get hauled in anyway if anything ever happens. So, but there's, I think there's, there's bylaws that other municipalities are using that they have in place that protects them from that liability. And it cuts the cost down for them. So I guess I'd like to hear from Sarah, that, the legal part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to the counselor. You're correct, many municipalities do have these kind of bylaws, but Jeff was also correct in that even if you have an excellent bylaw like that, that ultimately doesn't remove the responsibility on the municipality as the owner of the property. What, the real benefit of the bylaw though, is it kind of forces that neighborly action of clearing the sidewalk in front of your property. And that should, in theory, if everyone's doing that, reduce the, reduce the amount of claims that come to the municipality from someone who has slipped and fallen on a sidewalk. So that's, that's where you get the
So that's, that's where you get the, the benefit to the municipality of, and then, you know, hopefully, that would also reduce the amount of resources that are used to go ahead and clear the sidewalks. But even a great bylaw will not remove the responsibility ultimately of the owner, which is the municipality.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions before I move to motions? Councilor McNaughton?
More, more just sort of engaging in that, in that idea, which is, we see more and more municipalities going the way of clearing more, because, because when you have a lot of seniors in a community, and there are seniors in every community, you end up having to do spot, spot clearing for communities. A lot of big cities do that. I don't know what Belleville does, I don't know what Quinney West does, but I certainly know that a number of cities do that, and have graduated into full programs, which are actually a lot easier to manage, because they're not like just one senior here and there who can't manage it on their own. It's, it's a lot easier to just do them, which is why a lot of municipalities went this way in the, in the first place. And in, in my, in my town, so just picked in alone, because I haven't gone and knocked on doors or investigated outside, but I would also say Halliwell going in a number of locations, there, we've got a lot of people who, who will have to hire it out, and I think they would much rather pay, you know, a few bucks on their tax bill, sort of the reason we pool our, pool our resources to buy things together. And as, as I mentioned before, and as Sam mentioned, I hear a lot of requests asking for more services, because people want those plow lines cleared. Like, they want the little plows to follow the big plows and clear out the plow lines. A lot, I'm not, I'm not putting a motion on for that, I saw a couple of heads shake. But that is a common request that I get from people. I've had that request from people on Loyalist Parkway, both ends, from Ontario Street, from County Road 10, people who get really angry about those icy plow lines because they are backbreaking. So, and not everyone has their own little, not everyone has a John Deere in the garage. So I, I think sharing our resources, I mean, that's what taxes are, we, we pool together so that, you know, the resources that you use, you might not use every resource, but it, it really means that you can pay a few bucks so that, you know, so that some people who need the resource are able to have it, so that we can have active transportation in areas where there are sidewalks. So on principle, I think it's a good thing. It's just, and it's the same sort of thing, like, you know, having to, having, everyone paying a few bucks is a lot better than a senior on Ontario Street having to pay 300 for the winter. So, like, I, I think those, those sort of more backstreet clearings are very helpful, too. They allow us to keep active transportation safe through the winter in all of our neighborhoods, everywhere where there's plowing. I would rather see the program expanded, and actually would even, I mean, I'm not advocating for it, but I would love someone to come along and plow my, my little plow line, my little ice pack plow line, too. So that, that was just sort of a thought that I had regarding reduction of service. But I do have a motion for later.
Okay, yeah, Councilor, I'm going to go to Councilor Hirsch, and we'll move on to motions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, too, Councilor Nyman's point about how do we take, how do we take sidewalks out of the system in terms of plowing? We already do that. We have a long list of sidewalks that are closed for the winter, and that's our legal background, and as Sarah said, that may not protect us. But Milford sidewalks, don't get done. We have no sidewalks plowed in South Marysburg, and lots of other places in the county in the winter, and they're all listed in the bylaws. So if you want to add more to that list, knock yourselves out.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the vote on the, the motion to receive for information, then we'll move into the others for standalone motions. So I'll call the, the vote on receiving for information. All those in favor? Nat Carries, thank you. So I'll go to Councilor Nyman first for his motion.
So the first motion would be that staff, staff come back to us probably in the spring, or second quarter of next year, with a report on sidewalks that are not heavily used. How you do that, I, I don't know. I think Jeff has identified some ways of doing it, you know, whether, I mean, we're out there plowing every day when the snowstorm comes, so we have people on the street every day. So I'm sure supervisors drive around inspecting the roads. We have the roads patrolman that's out there every day. So we have the means, we're not going to be adding more work, because we've already got people driving, and I don't, I know it sounds bad, but they're driving around on these streets. So I think we are able to capture the data that we need to be able to say that this sidewalk really don't get used a lot, but we're plowing it all the time. So I guess the motion would be to have staff come back to council in the second quarter of 2026, unless you have something.
How about that staff be directed to complete pedestrian counts over the upcoming winter months, and return with recommendations for service level amendments in 2026?
Sure.
Yes. Sounds like it might be something to keep you busy in your retirement, too, while you're there. I see Troy at the mic, so I'll hand it over to Troy.
I think it's going to be tough to do pedestrian counts. So I have no problem doing a full, like, a sidewalk review assessment. I did it for boat launches, gravel roads, but I have no problem doing a sidewalk review. And so I, I just need to spend the winter collecting, you know, visual data, talking to the operators and stuff, and bringing back in Q2, like, an assessment or a report on sidewalks with maybe some recommendations of, of our results, of what we see. But pedestrian counts is going to be tough, or else I'm going to say...
We should probably get a second or first, if we have a second. Councilor Grosso? So yeah, go ahead now, you can ask your question.
Okay, thank you. So that motion that Becky just read, is that, would be that, would that be what you're looking for, or no?
Through you, Chair. The pedestrian counts is, that's the tough one, because I'm not going to be able to, it's, it's going to be a tough one to do. So we'll do visual inspections, we'll collect visual data, stuff like that, and do an assessment.
interim CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just do have concerns, and it was me that put that in there, because I thought we would focus on specific areas within the county. We have a huge route. I don't see, with all respect, without being able to set some parameters to what we're looking to do, right? Pedestrian counts is where we would set people out on the, on the good days, when they're not plowing, let's say, in Cherry Valley, or Consecon, or some, perhaps some of those areas, and, and count pedestrians at a specific location for several hours. We can get a handle on that. To drive around and see who's walking on sidewalks, I'm not certain that that's going to give us any, any quality of data that we can use to make any assumptions. So the recommendation, as we do with traffic vehicles and pedestrians, would be to, to select some locations where council would like us to focus on the review, and, and then identify how many people are walking in the, in the better weather. It doesn't do any good to count pedestrians in the snowstorm, because we're going to have less people using them, right? So the people who are plowing the sidewalks, I don't think the quality of data would be good. So my, my suggestion is, if we want to identify certain areas to review, perhaps like Cherry Valley, like some of those ones that we know would be perhaps a little less used, and we would like to use that to influence future decision-making processes, that we identify those as part of this. But to leave it network-wide, I, I just think it's a very large task, and I'm really not sure what, you know, unless we really focused in, we would get good quality of data to make decisions from, or with.
Councilor Nyman?
Yeah, okay, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate all the input, so I'm, I guess I'm just looking for a way forward here, I guess. And, because my next motion would have been to remove the, the snow plowing from Cherry Valley, because I think we could use it with the wings on, on the plows. But I, I think if, I don't know that I understand you right, Adam, but is to identify a place like Cherry Valley, or Consecon, or identify some areas where we want to have it looked at. But I guess, because it's so big, I, I don't know that we can do it all right now, now that I understand what you're trying to get. So how do we move forward? Like, do we bring it back at a future meeting where we can, where we have time to go over things, or how do we proceed?
Through you, I, I guess it really is a question for council as to, as to what we wanted out of this, this assessment. Are we looking to reduce our efforts in the, in the areas where we need to truck vehicles? Our, I'm trying to identify what the, what the end result here, what the goalposts are for this exercise, right? If we're looking to scale back in the entire county, I would suggest we would need to put a lot of effort into counting people to determine which sidewalks are used and which aren't. So I, I was assuming you were referring to some of our other areas, which I wonder myself, right? Are we seeing pedestrians in Cherry Valley on, on the roads all the time? And what can we do with the information once we gather it? Could be Bloomfield, could be Consecon, could be anywhere else.
Okay. So, then I got Councilor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm with Councilor Prinsen on this, supporting the staff report, and cautious about adding service. I have two very simple, common sense requests for the folks of Saffiasburg. One, in August, the sidewalk in Demarestville is precarious. So a little bit of care in the winter, because in the summer, it's dangerous, you can break a leg there. And two, it would be really nice if people didn't plow over the access to the condominium mailbox in Northport. Because when you see elderly people trying to shovel their way to get their mail, it's disconcerting. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. So back to, to Councilor Nyman's motion, are you...
Okay, so I, oh, okay.
Through the Chair, if I may, just out of respect for Troy's comments, amend it slightly to read that staff be directed to complete an assessment of pedestrian use of sidewalks over the upcoming winter months, and return with recommendations for service level amendments in 2026.
So could we add, put it as in the out, the outlying areas, where we have to truck the equipment? So it'd be Cherry Valley, wherever we have to truck the equipment. But we're not, we're not canceling anything right yet, it's just a fact find, or I guess, data collection is what we're looking for.
Okay, we'll get that added in there. And the second is okay with that, I'm assuming? Councilor Grosso? Okay. Do you want to just read it one more time, maybe Becky, just so everybody is clear?
So I did amend it to that staff be directed to complete an assessment of pedestrian use of sidewalks over the upcoming winter months in the outlying areas. Do we want to specify whereby equipment? So specifically Cherry Valley and Consecon, and return with recommendations for service level amendments in 2026. One more time?
No, no. I just want to speak to the motion.
Okay, Councilor Maynard?
I, I would, I would, I would support a review, but to, to cherry pick two, two communities, and not any of the lesser-used urban areas, is not, to me, that's not, I mean, in those areas already have very limited sidewalk snow plowing. So if you, if you're going to just identify two specific areas, then I can't support that. I would, I would support a review, but not to, to, just to look at, at two, at two areas only.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mayor Ferguson.
Thanks. I've got a question for CAO. Will this motion, it's another report, interfere with other, other items on the long list of projects that are being undertaken before the end of the term? There was a point where we had 119 items. I think it's whittled down a bit. Is this actually doable?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mayor Ferguson. This, this adds to the workload, and I think I may have mentioned earlier, we have a lot of work to do in the first quarter and half of next year, to make sure we're, we're getting some things off the books in advance of the election. So this would add to that, there's no, no doubt there. But the data collection part would probably not be as much of a concern, but it is another report, it is another motion, it is more work for us.
Okay. I just wanted to hear your response to that, I think for the benefit of council as well.
Good. Okay, Councilor Brandhorst?
Thank you, Chair. Can I have a guesstimation of what it would actually save to not plow Cherry Valley and potentially Consecon? Because to me, the mass majority of this plowing and the job and the workload and da-da-da is coming into all the main areas that have entirely large loops, and minus a straight line. So what would it actually save? Like, are we penny-pinching here to make a point, or are we actually going to save longevity?
Through the Chair of the Council, I don't guesstimate. I don't like to guesstimate. Things happen when you guesstimate, stuff goes wrong, so I would have to go back and do a bunch of figuring to figure out roughly, but it's your trucking costs, because our machines are in, the ones that do those two outliers, the Bloomfield sidewalk plow, we travel it to Cherry Valley, and then the Wellington sidewalk plow, we take to Consecon. So we load them up on the trailers, trailer them, and then bring the units back after we're done. So I would have to pull some numbers and try to figure it out.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilor Nyman, then I'm going to call the vote on this one.
If I could just respond, I guess, and from what I'm understanding, is to do a full review of everything is a lot of work. I think I just heard that just doing these two small ones is a lot of work. So I guess for me, we have to start somewhere, and we're not canceling any plowing. This is just to collect data, it is. And if you don't want it the second quarter, then make it the third quarter, it doesn't matter to me. But just bring something back that says, you know what, we could, and then you look at the other areas. But, or you don't, but you need to find out what's going on. But you got to have something to go by first. And to do the whole county, you never get that information, you wouldn't. So you, you pick just one if you want, I, I don't care. I mean, we, we need something, that you have some kind of data. Without it, then you're, you're just spinning your wheels.
Okay, the motion's, okay, Council...
I apologize. I did want to speak to Councilor Maynard's comments from earlier, just because earlier on in the conversation, we were discussing potential improvements, improvements to the routing in Consecon. And so this was part of the plan with, with getting the numbers, is having staff observe if people are walking on those. You don't necessarily, I would point out also, always need to see people walking, you can tell by the tracks and the snow and those sorts of things whether sidewalks are being used. So the intention, I don't believe, and we shouldn't be assuming that the results of this would be eliminating anything. It might be rejigging your routes and, you know, optimizing our routing. So that, again, it wasn't the intention that we would conclude any sort of reduction, it could be an improvement.
Okay. I'm going to, no, we're going to go to the vote. So the motion's on the floor, moved by Councilor Nyman, seconded by Councilor Grosso. All those in favor? One, one, two, three. And that, that loses. Okay. Councilor Maynard, do you have a motion?
I do. Thank you. I'll try and make this one much easier. What I'm looking for is that, and the clerk can help me after that, prior to the, to the next council meeting, that there be a, there be a staff review of the sidewalk winner maintenance roadmap in Consecon. And I'll leave it at that, but I would say that the intent is not to increase the, the number, number of meters, I think it's just to, it is to better realign with the, with the, with the walking patterns in the village. We don't have any crosswalks. I suggest this may actually, it should make it more efficient, and maybe a few less, a few less meters in the, going on. So I'm, I'm just looking for that brief...
Okay, do you have a second for this one? Councilor McNaughton?
Just a review.
Can you just, can you just read it one more time, please, Councilor Maynard?
Madam, madam clerk?
So we have prepared that staff be directed to review, review sidewalk plowing service levels in the hamlet of Consecon, and return with proposed amendments to bylaw 11-2020, being a bylaw to authorize the seasonal closure of sidewalks for council's consideration.
Okay.
Do we not just vote on that, the review of Consecon? And now we're doing it in... Can I just vote on that, the review of Conseccon? And now we're doing it again?
Well, I'll look to Becky to see.
So this is a different...
Yeah, the previous motion that just lost was to complete an assessment of pedestrian use. This one's to review sidewalk plowing service levels. Wow.
For pedestrians to use?
Just, sorry. So may I?
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel Maynard.
This is a very granular, I mean, I wanted to be able to bring it forward earlier, right? This is a, this is a small adjustment in the routes. This isn't adding anything. This is just a, you know, a common sense. This is, you know, where we can best use the resources.
Yeah, so it's on the floor.
Jesus.
It's on the floor, so we'll just... Okay, so it's on the floor. I think Counsel Maynard has explained it. I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor? And that loses. Okay, are there any more motions on sidewalk plowing? Counsel McNauton?
Yes, that staff investigate whether the repaired portion of the Hill Street sidewalk can be added without additional resources, or without, you know, any exceptional additional resources.
Okay, a seconder for that one?
And I think it's an additional $10 if the per kilometer cost is $54.
Okay, so Counsel St. Jean's seconding that. That's pretty straightforward. I'm gonna call the vote on that one. All those in favor? That one loses as well. So I think, looks like we're ready to move on. Okay.
We already did.
Yeah. Okay, so that brings us to item 6.4, Report of the Corporate and Legislative Services Department dated November 13, 2025, regarding the supplementary report to report CLS 13 2025 Taxi Bylaw Update. Okay. Can I get a mover and second to put this on the floor, please? Counsel Prinsen, seconded by Counsel Nyman.
Prinsen, Nyman, motion that supplementary, supplemented, it's getting long already. This report, CLS-36-2025, and Report CLS-13-2025 regarding the taxi bylaw update be received. Two, that the bylaw to regulate and license vehicles for hire and repel bylaw 63-2020, the vehicle for hire bylaw, has set out an attachment two to this report be approved at the next feasible council meeting. Three, that bylaw 63-2020 being a bylaw to regulate and govern taxicabs, limousines, businesses, and delivery businesses regularly used for hire their owners and operators in the county of Prince Edward be repealed in full effect of August 1, 2026. That the licensing fees as set out in attachment three to this report and the taxi fares as set out in attachment four to this report be approved. Five, that the SATFIN schedule as set out in attachment five to this report be approved and staff be directed to apply to the Ontario Court of Justice for approval of SATFIN. Six, that the implementation of administrative monetary penalties as set out in attachment six of this report be approved. And seven, that consequential amendment to the fees and charges by law, administrative penalty by law, and appeals committee by law required to implement the recommendation of this report be approved. And carrying on to the next page, that commencing in 2026, as part of the annual fees and charges by law update, staff be directed to review the taxi fares with all licensed taxi operators prior to proposing any changes. And that staff be directed to review the vehicles for hire by law in consultation with all licensed taxi operators at least once every five years.
Just one little correction. Yeah.
I think it's April 1, 2026, not August. I think that's what you may have read, Counsel Prinsen.
Yes, that's correct. It's April 1.
It is April.
Sorry.
Okay. We, I'm gonna move, Sarah, do you have anything to add to this before I move to questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, please. I'm very pleased to bring forward this report to council with staff's recommendation on a modernized vehicle for hire by law. I'd like to highlight that the recommendations in this report are the product of extensive consultation and review of best practices of other municipalities, especially our neighboring municipalities. And we were looking to find any consistencies with their approaches, where that was, where that made sense for the needs of our community. The key changes that you'll see are that there are, we are introducing new categories of vehicles for hire, including transportation network company, which I'll, if needed, I'll refer to it as TNCs because it's quite a mouthful, not unlike the recommendations of the report. So TNCs are, that's just the sort of industry lingo that talks about these ride sharing services or businesses such as U-Ride. And then also introducing a licensing category of broker. There have also been only slight increases to the fare schedule in response to the public feedback that we heard that fares are already too high. And so the fare adjustments that we made were to increase the destinations, so it's clearer for passengers who want to go somewhere that they're not having to do the math in their head of the $1.60 times kilometers. And then round it up, because we, last year, there was a, for example, the Picton Fair was like $9.90. So where we had fares like that, they were rounded to the nearest dollar. And then we've expanded the enforcement tools by adding authority to issue orders to comply, as well as administrative monetary penalties to encourage compliance with the bylaw. So the purpose of all of the amendments that are before you today and our recommendations is really to acknowledge and accommodate the different business models, provide, promote fairness, and improve the conditions for both the businesses and the users of vehicle for hires in the county. That's my little preamble, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with Counsel Nyman, then we'll go to Counsel Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have one question, and then, like, I'm good with it. The only thing is, would be, I believe, number four. And when the time comes, I'll ask to have that referred back to, and anyways, when that time comes, I'll make that motion. But the question that I have is, so if there's a service there, and then a tourist comes in, and say I own the service. So the tourist comes in, but I'm driving their car. They want me to drive their car around to tour the, for a wine tour or whatever. Is that covered in here? So I'm driving, as a company, no, I'm, they're paying me to drive their car around. So is that covered in here? Someone asked you to drive it around? Yeah, so they call me up because I've got this, this is a service that I'm providing. I will drive your car around. What's that? So if there's a service, is that covered in here, in this bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So are you thinking of something like the, like Operation Red Nose, where the people come and pick you up and then take you in your car somewhere?
No, so I'm, I've posted out there that I'm, the service I'm providing is, I will drive your car around to the wine tours or wherever for a fee. And then I go home, but it's your car I'm driving. I guess is that covered in this bylaw? What's that? No, it's not a taxi, but I think the...
Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that would be included in the definition of a limousine. So the definition of a limousine doesn't, in its definition, require that the limousine be owned by the driver of the limousine. So it sounds to me like that's the service that you'd be providing in that circumstance, that even though you're driving someone else's vehicle, if you are driving them around, charging them an hourly or a per day rate, that's going to satisfy the definition of a limousine.
So they should be licensed in?
Yes, as a limousine license.
Okay. Okay, Counsel Hirsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A simpler question, I think, Sarah. Was U-Ride consulted in developing this, and were they happy with it?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, U-Ride was consulted. Mr. Kelly unfortunately couldn't be here today, the supervisor of bylaw enforcement, but he spoke directly with the former owner of U-Ride. As I understand it, there's been a change in ownership fairly recently. And they were, I mean, I don't know that any business owner is very happy about having regulations on their business, but I think he understood the regulations that we were going to put forward. And in particular, the regulations around those TNCs, these U-Ride-type businesses, are essentially marry, or match the regulations in Belleville. And U-Ride also operates there. So it will now have some consistency between those adjoining jurisdictions of how these different businesses operate, including the, you'll notice one thing that I am extremely proud of and looking forward to exploring more, is with the transportation network companies, the proposed fee structure would be that the license would be much higher than what taxi or limousine services pay to just have the license. And then on top of the licensing fee, there's an additional per ride fee that they are required to pay to the municipality. And the idea would be that we would explore using those funds to enhance transportation services and accessibility throughout the county. So, and that's, I understand, is Belleville's approach, as well as some adjoining municipalities or other municipalities.
Thank you. I just, I agree, we should be consistent, and I think it all makes sense. I just hope this isn't going to drive them to come back to us and ask for subsidy again. Because I think they've been quite successful. And I think that's also the future, not taxis. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Pennell?
Someone comes to mind. Towards the beginning of this term, we had people that wanted to go these oversized four-by-quarters, and they were gonna go to wineries within the county. Now, we basically, they disallowed that on those trails. But most of the spots in the county, it's legal to drive one of those. So if somebody comes along and says, I'm gonna start doing tours of the winery, or whatever, that way, do they fit in as a taxi, or do they have to have a license if they do that?
Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So you're correct. There was a concern, I feel like it was last summer, like a year ago, where there was a concern about the use of the Millennium Trail and some large off-road vehicles. And so the Millennium Trail bylaw was amended at that time to prohibit that type of activity. So that would not allow commercial activity on the trails. So that would be allowed.
But we can travel by road in one of those vehicles in most places in the county, other than provincial highways. If somebody decided to move people that way, are they a taxi or what are they?
I believe they still have to be licensed to be able to offer a tour. My understanding. But I'll let Sarah answer.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I always go back and check wording of definitions when just, without just speaking off the cuff, just to make sure. And certainly, as a motor vehicle, and an off-road vehicle is included in that definition. And so if they're doing that by charging an hourly rate, they would fall under that definition of limousine and be required to be licensed to have wine tours or other type of tours.
We may, I just want to be sure, because it's happened once, I guarantee you, down the road, it'll come back again.
Okay, any other questions? Counsel St. Jean?
Thank you. And I'll be very brief, recognizing the time and the fact we have to go into a closed session. Sarah, with regards to vehicle identifiers, as a person who lives in a neighborhood with multiple STAs, I see limousines, wine tours, going down the driveway next to my house all the time. And rarely do I see them with a proper business ownership sign on the side. County wine tours, that one is obvious. But there are a number of our operators in the county that they're just a big black vehicle, or a big white vehicle with no names on them. And to the best of my knowledge, no number of license identifiers or anything. How can we ensure that all of these limousine tours, whatever you want to call them, it's visible to everyone that that's what they are, and that they, and with a license number that's obviously searchable, to ensure that they are operating legally? Because I can tell you, there are, I have heard numerous concerns from residents that there are a number of, have been a number of illegal operators. And I just want to make sure that, unlicensed operators, I should say. I want to ensure that it's very visible. You know, if you own a business, you put your name on your vehicle, especially if you're a wine tour. You want more wine tours. So how do we guarantee that? Like, I know there's mention somewhat in there, but sure to put in a bubble on their hood. What are we doing to make sure that everyone that is licensed, it's obvious that they're licensed?
Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things to hopefully address that. The license identifier is, it's gonna be a plate, and it's actually going to be provided by the municipality. We're going to, as opposed to, I'm not, I'm gonna admit, I'm not 100% sure. I haven't seen with my own eyes what we're using currently, but as the plate or the license that's issued. But we're going to generate something from the county that they're going to be required to display on their vehicles that will apply to both taxis and limousines. So limousines, again, capturing the broader tour, wine tours and such. And then it also goes hand in hand with our increased enforcement efforts. So there may be operators who were not certain that they were required to license as a limousine. And so we have the tool of an order to comply. So rather than just having to hit people with a fine or take them to court right away, we will have those additional tools as well. And it should be easier for officers to identify vehicles that are not licensed. I do understand, and would point out, that there is a bit of, the enforcement of that type of complaint can be challenging, because we don't want our bylaw officers put in a position where they're going to a business and making inquiries about the use of a particular vehicle while there are tourists that are there making use of that vehicle. So that can pose some of its own problems. But I'm confident with the enforcement, the increased enforcement tools that we're adding to this bylaw, and that the way that we're requiring drivers to identify themselves as these type of vehicles, that will do a better job, will have better tools to be able to identify those who are not complying with the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I call the vote? Counsel Nyman?
I just, I wanted to make that motion.
Yeah.
So it's, it's number four.
If I may, just for clarity, Counselor Nyman, you're looking for the bylaw that is set out in attachment four to be corrected for a discrepancy prior to council's adoption?
I'm looking for what?
Like, you had mentioned it's the taxi fares that has this discrepancy with the distances. So you're just looking for that correction to be made prior to council adopting it, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so it's to have that conversation with those taxi owners. But I'll be ready for when the, whenever it comes to council. Right?
Yeah.
Well, what's happening here, if you go through here, so you go to Rosmore, it's $55.
Yeah, the fares are, yeah.
You go to Belleville, it's $45. So...
So but you're wanting consultation with taxi operators?
Or at least.
At least.
Have a look at that to get it all straightened out.
Okay, is that direction, or do we need a motion?
Well, so I do have a prepared motion that reads that clause number four of the recommendation be amended to read as follows, that the licensing fees as set out in attachment three to this report be approved, and the taxi fares as set out in attachment four to this report as amended to ensure fares are consistent based on distances to destinations be approved. However, consultation?
Yeah, because that's not the only one. There's, like I went through, there's quite a few, right? So this is, that's the part I want to get to. It's not just one. If it was one, okay. But it's quite a few. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that's all I'm saying. It's, I don't know, you want to make it fair, it's gotta be fair, right? You want to make, you're not... You want to make, you're not gonna look at this for another year, so.
Okay. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, but, but the, when you're speaking of there being discrepancies or to make it fair, it's because there are some just destinations where the, it's, it's all about the distance, right? Because, so then I can, unless there were other reasons why, other reasons why you thought the, the fares need to be looked at, but if it's just a matter of looking at the distances from, from Picton, then I think the, the wording is all right and we could add in in consultation with the operators.
So I'll give you another example. So you go into Wapoos Marina, it's $61 or $65. You go to the Wapoos Winery, it's $60, where you're traveling seven kilometers further. So, I, I, you know, I don't want any point, like, I, I'm not saying, you know, I don't want to, I just want to make sure it's right.
Yes.
So it likely needs another look, then?
Through to the chair, I think this amending motion would still satisfy it, just that that bylaw wouldn't come back at the next meeting, it would be delayed.
Okay.
Does, correct?
Okay. Do you have a second or for that motion, Counselor Nyman? Counselor McNaughton? So everybody's clear on what's happening here?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Sarah?
So the second example also sounded like it was a, a question of distance, so that is what I'm looking at, correct? There's, there's no other parameter that I'm looking at, just the distance. Okay. Then I, I'm confident I can bring that back by November 25th as well, have those consultations. I must say, the, the taxi business, they're very engaged and have been wonderful to work with, so I'm confident that, unless they're unavailable, that they'll make time. Thank you.
Okay. The motion's on the floor, I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor? That carries, thank you. So then the main motion as amended, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that carries as well, thank you. So we will now move into closed session, so can I get a motion to move us into closed, please? And while the stream's loading, we'll take a five-minute recess, but let's move into closed first. Counselor Prinsen and Counselor Pennell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Prinsen and Pennell motion that committee move into closed session to consider D, labor relations or employment, or employee negotiations regarding employment agreements pursuant to section 239D of the Municipal Act.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that carries, thanks. Let's take a five-minute break.
Okay, great. McNauton-Pennell motion that the collective agreement between the corporation of the county of Prince Edward on the Prince Edward County Professional Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 2745 be approved and that a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a new collective agreement between the corporation of the county of Prince Edward and the Prince Edward County Professional Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 2745 be brought forward for enactment at the November 25, 2025 council meeting.
Thank you, Councilor McNauton. All those in favor?
Can I have it? I'm gonna... You were.
You were enclosed.
I'm gonna ask for a recorded vote. Sorry. Yes, to go through, sorry.
Okay, so Councilor Maynard's asked for a recorded vote. Councilor Maynard?
In favor.
Councilor Grosso?
In favor.
Councilor Nyman?
Opposed.
Councilor Prinsen?
Opposed.
Councilor St. Jean?
In favor.
Councilor Pennell?
Opposed.
Councilor Engelstorfer?
In favor.
Councilor Hirsch?
In favor.
Councilor McNauton?
In favor.
Mayor Ferguson?
In favor.
And that carries seven to three.
Okay, thank you. Can I please get a motion to adjourn? Councilor Prinsen seconded by Councilor McNauton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a Prinsen-McNaughton motion. This meeting now adjourn at 4:20 PM.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you.